Hello, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with Executive Order N 2920 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950, and the Federal American with Disabilities Act. This meeting will be physically open to the public and also accessible via Zoom. Zoom meeting information is posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the City Council meetings by emailing the city clerk at city clerk at ci.series.ca.us. By 5:00 p.m., the date of the meeting include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. A clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the City Council and kept on file as part of the official record of the City Council meeting. Welcome, everybody, to a regular City Council meeting today, Monday, July 12. And I now call this meeting to order. I'll get the roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhino, Councilmember Silvera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Condit.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. We can start off with the invocation by Pastor Tim from Big Valley, Greece.
Thank you for allowing me to be with you tonight. In Proverbs 1616, it says, "How much better to get wisdom than gold, to get insight rather than silver." And then in James, it says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, where it will be given to you." So tonight, we do, we ask that as we open this meeting. And Lord, would you give great wisdom? The role that these men and women have before them is great and mighty. Require knowledge that goes beyond their scope of of understanding and even their their life experiences. It will require wisdom to know what is best and right and good and the choices to make on behalf of the citizens and the people of this community. Thank you for their service. We thank you for their ability to act on behalf of others. We thank you for their their hearts and their kindness to this community. And so, Father, would you give them the wisdom that they need? Would you lead them and guide them in the right steps and the right ways? And would you bless this community, this town, city, and the people that dwell with them? And thank you again for their leadership. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Tim. Appreciate that. Today, we have a presentation. This is actually a proclamation declaring July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Series. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs continue to make lives and communities better even with face with an economic crisis. And whereas Parks and Recreation in adapting to the COVID-19 guidelines set forth by government agencies has found ways to continue to provide vital services to the City of Series community through engaging virtually, providing dynamic online events, programs, and new learning opportunities designed to keep families active while the stay-at-home orders were in place and beyond. And whereas Parks and Recreation provide frontline jobs, childcare for the essential workers workforce, and promoting community revitalization. And whereas Parks and Recreation has celebrated diversity through providing safe, clean spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equality, and assuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation projects protects our natural habitats and open space connecting people to nature and promoting the ecological function of parks land. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in these recreational opportunities. And whereas Parks and Recreation provide many children, adults, seniors with the wide range of services, facilities, and programs provided by the City of Series. And whereas the City of Series urges all its residents to recognize that Parks and Recreation programs enrich the lives of its residents and visitors as well as adding value to the community homes and neighborhoods. Now, therefore, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of City of Series, do hereby proclaim July 2021 as National Parks and Recreation Month and urge all citizens to safely use and enjoy our parks and recreational opportunities. I'm not sure if Matt is here today. Okay. I'll hand it to him. And thanks, also, thanks to Public Works as well. Thank you very much. We're going to start off with citizens' communication. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules now allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda. May be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matters which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any items subject to the five-minute provision. We're going to go ahead and start off with in-person comments. Doesn't look like we're having anybody in person. And now, we're going to start off with any Zooms comments.
Raise your hand.
Do we have any emails?
No emails.
Okay. Our comment period is now closed. So we're going to start off with appointments to boards and commissions. Council designation of a voting delegate to represent the City of Series at the annual League of California City Conference. Anybody?
Yeah, Mayor, council members. The League of California Cities holds an annual conference in September. This year, it's going to be in Sacramento. They ask each city that is going to be participating if they would have a delegate at that conference for the General Assembly, which is the closing session. In former years, Councilperson Rhino has performed that function. But I believe that any of the ones that are attending the conference can so volunteer for that task. But we just need to have one of the council members appointed so that we can provide that information to the league.
And if I may, and also, they also ask up to two voting members named.
Two additional alternates or just one alternate?
Up to, you can have up to two alternates.
Up to two.
So they want one primary and up to two alternate.
And as far as the City Council, who will be attending this?
I will not be attending, Mayor.
Will not be attending? Councilmember Silvera?
I will be attending but may not be able to stay late in it for that last meeting on the last day. So maybe as an alternate possibly, but probably wouldn't be a choice.
Okay, no problem. Councilmember Rhino?
I've done it for some, or if you'd like to, that's fine.
I'll go ahead and be the alternate if that's okay with you. Would you like?
You want to be?
I could do it most definitely. I just wanted to make sure if you're okay with it.
Oh, yeah. I would prefer to be the alternate.
Okay, sounds good. We just need a motion.
Going to do it.
I'll motion to be the the voting delegate and Councilmember Rhino as a second.
I think, Mr. Councilmember, you say we have two alternates?
You don't have.
As a second alternate.
You have up to two alternates.
So Councilmember Silvera, the alternate.
Be the second alternate? Okay. So I motion to have me as the primary, Ms. Rhino as the second alternate, and you as a third alternate.
No, 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 no. He would be the alternate. You would be the voting.
Voting member. So just one voting member, one. I just wanted to make sure. That's what I just said. Does that make sense, Ms. Rhino? So we can.
Just to clarify, you need one voting delegate and then?
I'll be the voting delegate.
Yes. And then you're.
You'll be the. You'd be the second alternate. Perfect. Sounds good. I'll second that. Hey, can we get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Does anybody have a declaration, a conflict of interest? Looking on. On to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the public that would like a consent item pool for further discussion?
Hand raised in Zoom.
Go ahead.
Mr. Yackley, your hands raised. I will unmute your mic. Your mic is unmuted.
There was some kind of mistake earlier in the, for the voices, you know, the five-minute issue. As Mayor Lopez was speaking, I looked down, I clicked on raise hand, and then when he finished speaking, I went back down again to make sure my hand was still raised, and it said lowered hand. So I clicked again, and he had already finished his his part, and I couldn't speak.
Apologies, Mr. Yackley. We did not see that.
Right. Yeah, I guess we'll do it next time, then.
Thank you, Mr. Yackley. Appreciate it.
All right. Carry on.
Well, nobody else in the public? Councilmember Rhino?
Item 12.
Item number 12. Vice Mayor?
Item nine.
We can get a motion passed to rest.
I'll move to pass consent calendar items one through eight, 10, and 11.
Second. We get a roll call.
Councilmember Rhino? Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
We start off with number nine, Resolution Number 202172, approving agreement with Stanislaus County for direct assessment services and authorizing the city managers to sign this agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, if you want to jump in and give a little background, and then I'll state my position.
So annually, the county of Stanislaus collects our property taxes, and through that process, they collect our direct assessments, which are Community Facilities District and, in some cases, Landscape and Lighting Districts. So the provision of this contract would just continue with that process that's been in place for, I think, since 2001, where they collect those assessments. And so approval of this agreement would continue that work that has been done over the past 20 years or so by allowing the county to collect, when they do their property taxes, collect our direct assessments, and then transmit those funds to the City of Series after they've been collected. So that's the purpose of the agreement that's before the council this evening. Because it is a five-year term, it has a requirement to be approved by the council.
Thank you, City Manager. And what is the process if we don't pass this tonight?
Then staff, I believe. Letitia chime in, but I believe staff would have to do the collection of those funds.
Staff would have to manually bill each parcel.
Well, at this time, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this agreement because of an earlier item that we had this year that I referred, the property tax assessments, which the county has not updated since 96, I believe.
You are correct, 1996.
Which are very lopsided, if you folks remember the report. The county gets 70% or 80%.
Generally, it's around 70% of the due tax increment, and the city gets 30% of the new tax increment. The county receives 100% of the base.
And I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with this agreement until we get that process straightened out and more equitable for the cities throughout the county. I know this agreement is a little different than what I'm talking about right now. But I think we ought to send the county a message that we deserve to be at the table, and they need to put the work in and make the property tax more equitable for the cities. Thank you.
I have a comment. I believe that's a matter for a different time. We're talking about collecting and then distributing. I'll move to approve 2021-72.
Need a roll call, please? Actually, need a second. A second? The roll call, please?
Councilmember Rhino? Yes. Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez? Motion passes three.
Moving on to Resolution Number 202175, establishing the classification, description, and salary range for the position of deputy city clerk. Councilmember, right?
I would just like to see the resolution corrected instead of it saying establishing the classification, description, and salary range for the positions code enforcement officer and deputy city clerk. It should only be the positions of the position of deputy clerk.
We can make that change.
Yeah.
Anybody still have, anybody still have any comments?
With that change, I'll move to approve 2021-75.
Second.
Is there? Okay, I'm, my apologies. Let's not do that again. Sorry about that.
Hand is raised. I will unmute your mic.
Mr. Yackley, can you hear us? Mr. Yackley? Can you hear me? Can you?
Crazy.
Well, before we move on, I just wanted to get clarification of what Rhino was requesting, just so I understand what we're voting on. What was the correction, Ms. Rhino?
The resolution inadvertently listed the senior code enforcement office position. We're going to strike that, so it's just the deputy city clerk.
Okay.
Which is all that was, that report was, the deputy city clerk.
Wanted to make sure I was hearing that correctly. Okay. Continue, council member.
I have a motion on the floor to approve 2021-75.
With the modification to the.
With that.
Second.
Get the roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes three one.
Okay. Moving on to public hearing to consider ordinance 2021-1067, an ordinance of the Series Municipal Code, amended Title 18 zoning, Chapter 2, definitions, and 40 floodplain management and flood hazard identification regulations, which would update the existing City of Series municipal code language to be consistent with the State of California Department of Water Resources requirements and ordinance. Number 2021-1068, an urgency ordinance of the Series Municipal Code, amended Title 18 zoning, Chapters 2, definition, and 40 floodplain management and flood hazard identification regulations, which would update the existing City of Series municipal code language to be consistent with the City of California Department of Water Resources requirements. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. Councilmembers, the item before you is some modifications to Chapter 40 of the zoning code, which is the floodplain ordinance. As you may recall, the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, updates what they call flood insurance rate maps on a semi-not consistent basis, but the last time their update is 2008. And so what they do is they map the floodplain, and they have various stages within a, you know, a five-year flood, 10-year, 50, 100, and a 200-year floodplain. The flood insurance rate map process has happened over the last couple of years, and those maps will become effective on August 24 of 2021. We were notified by FEMA through the Department of Water Resources that the city needed to update our Title 40 of our flood, Title 40, which is our flood management, flood, floodplain ordinance, that we needed to update those with some definitions in addition to Chapter 2, which is the general definition section. So we shipped the existing ordinance off to FEMA. They came back with a number of definitions that needed to be updated in addition to some other technical resources. They told us that once we have it adopted and it becomes effective, then our residents that are within the floodplain would be able to secure flood insurance if they so desire. So there's two items before you this evening. One ordinance, 1067, with normal ordinance, and then second is 1068, which is an urgency ordinance. When I had discussions with the Department of Water Resources, they had indicated that we had to have our ordinance adopted and effective prior to the August 24, 2021 timeline for it to be effective. After consultation with the city attorney, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have any lapse in coverage so that we were consistent with the flood insurance rate maps. And so we've got two ordinance, one, an urgency ordinance, which would become effective at this council meeting this evening. The second, 1067, would be introduction and first reading. It would come back at the next meeting for consideration and with approval, then would have a 30-day effective date after that. Unfortunately, that fall beyond that August 24 timeline. So therefore, after consulting with the city attorney, it was determined that we do both of these ordinance at one time to make sure that we didn't have any lapse in coverage of our flood insurance rate maps and that program. So with that, I would be available to answer any questions the council may have.
Councilmember Rhino?
The changes are not suggestions by FEMA. They're actually have to be stated. We haven't stated in our.
Correct. So FEMA reviewed and said that these are the technical and the definition updates that need to be made so that our ordinance is consistent with FEMA regulations.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And City Manager, what happens if we don't do this?
The potential is if we don't have an effective ordinance, then those properties that are within the floodplain that would be covered under the flood insurance rate map program would not be able to get flood insurance.
Thank you.
First of the public on Zoom? Go ahead and open up the public period for members in the public first. Anyone here would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor. First person with their hand raised is John Osgood. Mr. Osgood, I'll unmute your mic.
Good evening. I guess my question tonight would be for Mr. Westbrook. I just want to understand how this works here. So even those that are in traditional flood areas will no longer be able to get flood insurance? Or is this simply for the new areas or for people who would like to opt into a flood insurance program?
It's for existing folks, Mr. Osgood. They have to be, we have to have an updated ordinance so that they can continue to get flood insurance.
So, okay, I don't, I don't understand how mortgage companies require these guys to have this flood insurance, right? How the federal government can dictate to us, having dictated to the mortgage companies, that they already have to have this insurance, that we have to have an additional section in our municipal code just to cover the fact that, well, we have to have double, triple, quadruple redundancy? See, some of these things that we do as government aren't necessary because there are already other steps in place, right? If this was extending the ability to claim flood or to purchase flood insurance to say someone in my neighborhood that is not in a floodplain or traditional flood area, then we need to look at stuff like this. But I don't understand why we continue to allow, you know, state, federal governments, Department of Water Resources, who has no legislative authority, FEMA, who has no legislative authority to mandate what we do with our code when we cannot even address our code, when I bring up valid points of areas where it's deficient. I just like y'all to think about what we're doing here. We're ignoring the will of the people, and we're, and we're bowing once again to bureaucracies and changing our code yet another week for another issue. You know, and then tonight, I'm very disappointed in Councilmember Silvera, perhaps someone in the city attorney's office or the city manager's office can have a discussion with the deputy about procedure. If I wanted to raise my hand and comment, we jumped the gun, and we're just going to have a motion to do something. So those two issues, we need to start thinking about these things. We need to start behaving in manners that are precise, correct, and I'll leave that on in your guys' minds this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Is that the only person we have on?
One additional hand, Melissa Nissam.
There's one more person, it looks like.
Ms. Nissam, your mic is unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers here, for letting me speak. I don't know if this is, did I come in at the right time to speak about anything?
No, ma'am. Public period was closed earlier.
Oh, okay.
Strictly on this matter.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional hands are raised.
And no emails?
Yeah.
I missed it.
I might just have a question. Would these two ordinances, resolutions, be adopted at the same time, or would we vote on those separately? The urgency ordinance and the original?
We do the urgency separate and then the first reading, the regular ordinance.
So we're going to pass a motion for the urgency first, and then we'll, then the ordinance?
No. Move to approve ordinance 2021-1067.
Second.
You get a roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Move to approve 2021-1068.
Second.
You get a roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Doesn't look like we have any new business or any, anything on the discussion items. We have referrals. Number 14, consideration of Vice Mayor Condit's referral of Series Municipal Code, Title 18, Chapter 39, density bonus program. Chapter 39, Density Bonus Program.
Thank you, Mayor. I brought this up because it's something I talked about when I ran for office. I don't think this program has a direct benefit to the city. Hasn't been used since it's been implemented. I think it'd be good to take it off the books. It's just my opinion.
Um, is there any fiscal impact to the city to have this on in the municipal code?
No fiscal impact? No, there's no fiscal impact to have the density bonus program, which is a component of state law. So formerly, prior to the adoption of our beauty code, a few years ago, the density bonus provisions were up to 25%. State law allowed it to be up to 35%. So we changed our code at the time accordingly, but there's no fiscal impact to have this be a code requirement.
Thank you.
Isn't this just to get the item for discussion at a future meeting?
That's correct.
So we really are discussing it right now. We're going to say whether or not we want to move forward and have it put on agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
I'm fine with it moving forward for discussion.
As well as I?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of moving forward with it.
Yeah. Vice Mayor?
Oh, thank you all for hearing me out.
So we'll move, so we'll put that on our next agenda items, correct?
We just need to know when the item to bring back to the council, the timeline.
What does it, what does it look like? We have some, it could be next city council meeting?
No, no, I'm fine with a month or two months. I know we have agendas coming, so.
Okay. So do we want to provide direction, or do you want me to give a, give a date, or just bring it back in the next couple of months?
Next couple of months would be great, city manager.
Okay.
Mayor, you're okay with it moving forward?
Yes, I am. Okay, well, just give us a date when you get a chance, Mr. Westbrook. Yeah, consideration of Mayor Lopez's referral for information report regarding water rate structure and finding ways to help residents. This is something I just want to refer in a future date, so we can discuss the, we can discuss the history of how we got to where we are today in regard to the water rates. And hopefully, Mr. Jeremy can help us out with that, if, if the council would be okay with this, having this as a discussion in the future.
Fine with that as well, especially given that we have three new members on the council.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yeah, if it's just information on how the structure and our water rates, et cetera, how we come to those rates, then yeah, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Yes, I think this is a great, great thing, and we should all be better informed.
Thank you very much. And as, as far as the date, it doesn't have to be a speedy process, we can possibly...
I think that I would defer to Mr. Damas to kind of say when he may be able to get this back, probably not the next meeting for sure, but Jeremy, do you have an idea of when?
Second meeting in August? I need time for you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, moving on to reports. The only report that I have today is that we concluded our second weekend of the Concerts in the Park series. It turned out very great, and next week, next weekend, we're going to have Church Night Out with Tim and his chairs, Big Valley Grace. And I look forward for everybody to be there. That concludes my report. City Council?
Yeah, I would like to mention the Elmer Ochoa, Garamo, excuse me, Ochoa Park dedication ceremony on this Thursday at 5:00. It's my understanding they're going to have some fun and food and stuff out there, Mayor. Okay, I just want to remind everybody of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Members? City Manager?
Both the mayor and councilman Silbera took the things I was going to mention, so I have nothing further.
Thank you very much. Anybody from the departments? Okay. Is the county supervisor online, or is representatives? Captain, did you raise your hand, sir?
Yes, I was trying to get to the mic here real quick, get turned on. Just real quick from PD, we finished up the fireworks campaign. Yesterday was the last day of it. We started at Friday, June 25th, and ran it through July 11th yesterday. And with that extra staffing that we had out there, we issued 35 citations and took 262 calls for service regarding fireworks. We're still crunching some of the other numbers, but the email line is now down, and the phone line is now down. Those are not being monitored anymore, and now we're crunching all the data.
Great, great job. And thank you, you and the department chief and everybody for their participation in this. I think that we all did a great job. Thank you.
There is a hand raised.
Office of Chance Condit. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Russell Fowler from Supervisor Chance Condit's office. I don't have anything to report tonight, but I'd be happy to take any comments and questions and concerns you may have.
Anyone? Doesn't look like we have any comments or questions, but thank you very much.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Have a great night. Okay, so we will now adjourn this meeting and go to a closed session for a conference with legal counsel. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to the closed session item, after closed session, the city attorney will return to report out. Any members from the public? Zoom? Okay, thank you.
Yes, on the one closed session item conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, the city council gave direction to staff on that matter.